I got three more minutes till first pitch.
Okay, I'd like to call this Newmarket Town Council Business Meeting to order, June 3rd. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Just a quick note to councilors, I realized after the agenda was printed that the minutes show up as being first thing addressed and by the rules of procedure that we adopted, it should be second. We should be doing the public forum first. So, we'll follow the agenda for right now and future we'll be doing the not, the public forum before the minutes. So with that, I'll take a motion for accepting the May 18th organizational meeting minutes.
So moved.
Any discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Councilman Telly.
Aye.
Councilman Bottemin.
Aye.
Councilman Cox.
Aye.
Councilman Dickens.
Aye.
Councilor Bruggeron.
Aye.
Chairman LeBranche.
Aye. The May 20th meeting minutes, I understand, I know I only had parts of them. I'd like to know if the council's good with moving that to the next meeting for approval. Okay, so we will move that to the meeting on the 17th, June 17th workshop. Thank you. And now, for the public forum. Anyone from the public like to speak?
Yes.
I'm Judith Ryan, 125 Main Street. I would like to read three letters, first one being mine. This is to the Newmarket Town Council. You have received my letter of resignation for the, from the Advisory Heritage Commission in response to the town council's disregard of the criteria per membership set forth in Resolution 20012 relating to the establishment of an Advisory Heritage Commission. I quote, "The council shall appoint membership which shall consist of people who demonstrate an interest and ability to understand and appreciate the historic values of the community." You had before you three candidates for appointment to two seats on the commission. In my opinion, you have had one and only one person fill the page who met the criteria and had the experience and knowledge of the importance of historic preservation. You chose by majority vote to ignore that criteria. I personally want to thank all the previous commission members and the numerous of volunteers who have served and worked diligently to preserve the historic and cultural aspects of our community. Second letter, this is from Michael Dowling. Dear Mr. LeBranche, it was distressing to learn of the council's decision to allow Philip LePage's appointment to the Historic Advisory Commission to lapse. Prior to my own March 19th, 2009 appointment to the Advisory Heritage Commission, I was concerned that after many years of preparatory work, there seemed to be very little support and/or consensus about historic preservation in Newmarket. The sudden decision by the newly-elected council to change the makeup of the new advisory commission prior to any meeting or discussion seems to confirm that our community is not yet prepared to engage in a historic preservation effort. Accordingly, I submit my resignation from the Advisory Heritage Commission effective immediately. The second, the third letter is from Mr. Glennon. At the May 20th council meeting, the council voted by majority vote to appoint an individual, Mrs. Jennifer Jarvis, to the Advisory Heritage Commission and the newly-created Historic District Commission. According to the requirements set forth by the planning board and passed by the council, the following requirements are required by for an appointment to the Historic District Commission. Commission members shall have expertise or an interest in one or more of the following areas: historic preservation, architecture, real estate appraising, real estate brokerage, construction trades, economic revitalization. Preferably, at least one regular or alternate member shall be an architect. On Thursday, October 9th, 2008, at 10:26 PM, in an email Jen Jarvis wrote to the following, wrote to a member of the planning board and said for said document to be read publicly, and the following is a quote from the email presented by Janice Rosa. "I want you to know that I am 100% against creating a local Historic District Commission. This should be the decision of the taxpayers, not the people who want to make rules. So, the question becomes, how does the council appoint someone who clearly does not have the qualifications to serve on this board? I see two issues. Ms. Jarvis does not meet the requirements, and two, Ms. Jarvis clearly does not understand who makes the rules. It is the council who adopts and votes on rules, and through that process, the council must adhere to its rules by virtue of the charter. Therefore, it is with regret that I submit my letter of resignation as a member of the Advisory Heritage Commission." Thank you.
Copies?
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Any other public comment? Yes.
Orb schedule, 51 North Main Street, and I'm not going to take you over the barrel. I just want to say thank all of you people for taking the job. It's a thankless job. The job of Heritage Advisory Committee was obviously a thankless job. We worked many, many hours, days, weeks. And of course, we didn't get it all right, or we wouldn't have turned it all down, would we? So, just remember this. You have a responsibility. This town is wonderful. I moved here in 1951. I moved from Durham. I wouldn't live in Durham if it paid me the taxes. I had a house that I could have moved in. I love this place. So many people around here are just wonderfully intelligent, good people. Please, think of the fact the Heritage Committee is trying to preserve history. That's what we're talking about. You know where Love the Land Road is? Bay Road. These little things you ought to know. And you know something I think you all ought to get, History of Newmarket happens to be that my wife wrote it, but I think all of you people should study as much of the history of this town as you can. Because it's important that you know back there what happened, as well as what happens up here. Thank you so much. I'll see you sometime.
Thank you, Mr. Gatchell. Yes, Mr. Pickering?
Good evening, councilors, Town Administrator Winowski and Erica. I'm here representing myself this evening, and I am a current member of the Town Budget Committee, but I'm not here representing them. I'm speaking for myself. Back a few months ago, we were, as we, the Budget Committee was going over the town budget, one of the items that popped up for me was the fact that the new lights in the downtown area had come on, and I brought up the suggestion that perhaps we could shut those off and there would be a savings to the community. Today, I did a little bit of, actually, I do have a life, but I found time this afternoon to do a little bit of inventorying downtown, and I found that the old lights down there in the stretch from Eagles to the River Works, there were 13 of them. Those are the original lights that lit Main Street. There are now 42 to 44 additional lights in that same stretch along with the 13, so we have 55 to 57 lights lighting a strip that used to be lit with 13. I called PSNH today to find out if they had received an order to disconnect those 13 lights that I had suggested back a few months ago, and I was told no. What that is costing the town is an additional $377.65 per month while they're running. The problem is, they're not on. You might go down there tonight and say, "What, is he crazy?" They're not on. That's correct. They are not on because they have photocells on them. And there's so much light from the other 43 lights, these lights can't even come on any longer. So, we're paying for something we're not getting, and I think the council should take a look at that. I realize it's not huge dollars, but during these times, we should be looking at every dollar. And I do have some questions in reference to the new lighting. Forty-three or forty-four, 42 to 44 lights, additional lights, I'd like to know what the cost of that lighting is. I have no idea what that cost is, and I would like to know what that is. And the fixture lamps, what are the size, what are the wattages in those new lamps that are down there? There are a number of them that have a fixture that hangs over the sidewalk, and on the same pole is a fixture that hangs over the road. I kind of wonder if we actually do need all of that or not. I realize that they're nice-looking, it did enhance the downtown. Do we really need all that light? It seems like it's just an overkill. Fifty-seven lights in an area that once held 13 that suffice for the downtown. And I would like to comment that I believe if some of those lights were turned off, they don't have to be removed, but it's just a suggestion. I do know we have an energy committee in place, and perhaps that's something they're going to be looking at in the future anyways. But if some of those were turned off, they wouldn't have to be removed. You could still leave them there for the aesthetic looks of the fixture, I suppose. It just seems to me like 57 lights in an area, you'd be hard-pressed anyways in the state of New Hampshire to find 57 streetlights in a stretch from the Eagles down to River Works. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pickering. Did you have some answers? Can we hold it for Oldham Business?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment at 7:14. Next on the agenda, Ms. Cooper, is your group here? They're all here?
Well, Ryan's not here, but we're not sure where he is, so Serena's going to take his place.
He's at a baseball game.
Oh, okay.
Might do that.
All right. Then we'll hold off just a second. We'll go with item number two, if that's okay. All right, so that would be Artificial Recharge, Jamie Emery and Sean Craig, our wastewater superintendent.
You should give Sean a seat up here.
This is going to take about a half an hour. Do you want to just go left? Probably going to take 20 minutes at least.
Okay. Let's see, what do we got for number three? How about if we do the resolution? That should be fairly quick, right? Okay, let's do that, and that'll give Town Administrator a chance to do what he needs to get done. So, councilors, if you have no problems, I'd like to go right to number three on the agenda. One of these nights, we'll get them in order. Okay, this is a Resolution 200809-23, an upgrade to the wastewater treatment facility. And I get the pleasure of doing this. Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, by the Newmarket Town Council Resolution 2008/09-23, authorize Sewer Department to assist the EPA in permit negotiations and review draft nutrient criteria not to exceed $20,000. Whereas, on May 20th, 2009, the Newmarket Town Council voted to hire Underwood Engineers to perform work associated with the EPA's administrative order required wastewater treatment facility improvements. And whereas, the cost to assist in the permit negotiations with the EPA and represent the town in reviewing draft nutrient criteria is $5,000 to $10,000 each, total not to exceed $20,000. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Town Council does hereby approve the amount not to exceed $20,000. Said funds to be taken from the Sewer Department Capital Reserve Fund, given at the Town Council Chambers in Newmarket, New Hampshire, this third day of June in the year of our Lord 2009. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 2008? Discussion? I guess perhaps, Mr. Craig, if, would you like to just speak on this, or does the council have enough information from the last meeting? Are we good with this?
Yep.
Okay. Then, moving on, if there's no discussion, I see no lights, I'll call for the vote.
Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Councilman Telly?
Aye.
Councilman Bottemin?
Aye.
Councilor Cox?
Aye.
Councilman Dickens?
Aye.
Councilor Bruggeron?
Aye.
Chairman LeBranche?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Now, we can go to item number one. How about that, huh? Link Together Pocket Park Update. Before we get started, I'd just like to say that I'm glad to see all of you here this evening. I know you've put a lot of time and effort into trying to get the Pocket Park looking better, something that's a little bit of a showcase, and you should be proud of that. I know that the Town Council and the Town Administrator have often put little problems in your plans by putting little buildings on the site and things of that nature, but trust me, it'll all go away soon, and we can get this thing finished. So, with that, I believe there is a presentation that's available, so... You're going to do the first reading?
And then be representative.
Okay. Let's go with the first reading. First reader.
What we've done so far to meet our goals. The first year, we talked about what we wanted to put into the park and what our plans were for the park. We wrote our first Disney mini grant, and we were awarded, with the $500 that we were awarded, we bought rakes, shovels, garbage bags, gloves, and paint. We cleaned the park. We also washed the retaining wall and painted it white and to get rid of all the graffiti that was on it. Next is Serena Ricardo.
If I may interrupt for just a second, that was Madison, correct?
Yeah.
Madison Teague.
Madison Teague.
The second year, we went several, to several websites and decided what we wanted to put in the park. Then, we invited members of the Town Council to our meetings to share with them what we wanted to put in the park and see what they thought about our ideas. We listened to their opinions and changed some of the things that we had planned to include their ideas. We wrote several other grants. We were awarded, for the second time, another $500 for the Disney mini grant. This time, the money would be spent for the mural. We were unable to paint the mural because of the construction. The Disney mini grant people extended the project deadline until April 2009. Next is Stephen Cooper.
We presented our plan to the Town Council on April 16th, 2008, and received approval of the council to put our plan into action with the assistance of Mr. W. We applied to the Sunkist Corporation to win a lemonade stand to raise money. To do this, we had to write a 500-word essay as to how we would use the money we raised with the lemonade stand. They liked our essay and sent us a lemonade stand. With the construction, we were unable to use it. We will be using it this year. We have, we held our second annual park cleanup. Next, we have Haley Foster.
In our third year this year, we had to put our time and efforts into raising money to buy the equipment. We'll need to raise $7,532.48 to put everything that we want to in the park. We sold candy bars at the November 4th presidential election. We had posters of our cleanup efforts and what we wanted to put into the park. A woman from the community who was voting stopped at our booth. She liked what we were doing and gave us her email address. She works at Bottom Line Technology and asked us to write a proposal, and she would present it to her company. We did that, and they agreed to give us $300 for the bench. Next is Julia Haas.
We then wrote a proposal to PSNH. I gave it to my Uncle Matt, who works at PSNH. He took it to them, and they gave us a check for $900. We made Christmas ornaments and held a mini craft fair for the parents of Lake Together. We applied for the Captain Planet Grant for $900 for a second bench for the park. We were supposed to have heard from them in mid-April. Next is Adele Bode.
We contacted Timberland to see if they would partner with us on our project. We met with Tom Roberts and Jennifer Keith on February 12th, 2009. They agreed to partner with us. Then, on March 12th, 2009, we met with Mr. Michael Provost. He gave us pictures and information about the mills and bridge that floated away in the first floods. We decided that we wanted to use the mills and the bridge as our mural. Jennifer contacted us with City Year, and we began working on the design with them for the mural for the wall. We painted the mural with members of City Year on April 29th, 2009. Next is Ryan Hamel.
We submitted an application to Dollars for Change Grant for seed money of $1,193.33 to buy startup supplies to sell more candy bars, have a lemonade stand, make a quilt to raffle, and hold a scarecrow contest. We planned to take that money and make a profit of $3,830.51. When we were writing this grant, we had to plan what we wanted to do for fundraisers, what the cost was to run each fundraiser, and figure out how much we would sell everything to make a profit. Next is Brooke.
We have just finished working on a youth venture, New England Grant for $1,000. This grant was a workbook with activities that we had to complete to write the grant. We have learned how to write SMART goals. Every member of the group was given a role and responsibilities. We made a timeline of activities for a year. We came up with ways to continue with our project once the $1,000 seed money was spent. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you. Councilors or administrators, do we have any questions? No one has a question. I'm sure they're all just waiting for a question. Councilor Dickens?
What was the hardest part about going after all this money? I mean, you guys seem to be more successful than most people out there at raising money. What was the hardest part that you had to overcome?
I think the hardest part of it was doing the budgets and getting all the money and going to get the stuff that we needed to paint the mural.
Budgets are always fun.
Yes.
Town Administrator?
You had mentioned you're going to be selling lemonade. You're going to be using your skin. Where are you going to be doing that?
We haven't decided where, when, or where we're going to do it yet.
Did you hit? Tried again, because it didn't go off.
Yeah, it might be that one.
Okay, you might have to wave to me because it's not working tonight. Councilor Cox?
Maybe a suggestion would be to sell the lemonade at the farmer's market that they're going to be having up at the Stone Church. I think it starts June 20th?
Yes.
Twenty-first? No, 20th.
It's a good idea. Something to think about. Anyone else? Okay, well, I, whoops, you got...
I just wanted to say thank you to you all for what you're doing for that little park. I think it's great.
Yes. If there's nothing else from the council, I do believe that Representative Abbott is here. Would like to say something to the Link Together Group?
Sure. Can I use the box? It was short.
Thank you. Welcome to the new councilors, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Administrator. How many of you children have met Governor Lynch? I think most of you have. I think you probably met him with me. Did he take the opportunity to sit down and talk to you about different things? I'll just quick-check on whether you listened or not. Did the governor talk about his cats? How many cats does the governor have? Five? He always talks to the fourth graders about his cats. And what was his favorite cat's name? Was it Harry Potter? Yeah, Harry Potter. Well, the reason I bring up the governor is that Ms. Cooper asked me if I would talk to the governor about recognizing the efforts that you kids have made down with the Pocket Park. So, the governor does like to recognize what everyone does, and especially what children do. So, he was more than glad to sign a proclamation for you, a commendation, and I would like to read that and present that to you as a group. It starts by saying, "State of New Hampshire, by His Excellency John H. Lynch, Governor, a commendation to the Link Together volunteers. Whereas, more than 35 local volunteers from Link Together, the town government and local businesses are planning, cleaning, and refurbishing a local park at one of the gateways of the Main Street. And whereas, approximately 500 elementary schoolchildren and their families will have a safe place to sit and read a book or talk when they are in the downtown area. And whereas, children have presently raised $1,495. We could probably use some of that money to balance the state budget right now. Through fundraising efforts such as candy bar sales, lemonade sales, a mini craft fair of the total of $7,533 needed to replace benches, tables, and make other improvements to the park, and have plans to hold additional fundraisers. And whereas, the students have improved their public speaking, as we saw tonight, teamwork, writing aptitude, and mathematical skills by engaging in the various steps necessary to complete and implement this project. And whereas, these young volunteers have learned to apply for grants and have been awarded two Disney mini grants, each worth $500, which they have used towards purchasing supplies for their annual cleanup and to paint a mural on the existing retaining wall at the park. And whereas, students gain competence and confidence as they learn to work together as a team and saw their project come together. And whereas, the students wrote two proposals, one to Bottom Line Technology and one to PSNH, and received funds from the above businesses, 300 and 900... PSNH, and received funds from the above businesses, three hundred and nine hundred dollars respectively. And whereas the students furthered their writing and public speaking skills, preparing and submitting a successful proposal to partner with Timberland Corporation. Now, therefore I, John Lynch, Governor of the State of New Hampshire, do hereby commend the Link Together volunteers in recognition of their hard work, dedication, and service to the, to their community and state. The valuable life skills these young volunteers have acquired will prove to be long lasting, and it will. Given at the Executive Chamber and conquered this fourteenth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2009, and the Independence of the United States of America, 233. Sign, John Lynch, Governor, State of New Hampshire. Congratulations. And we also thought, I'll give the credit really to Ms. Cooper because she's doing a lot of this thinking in the background. She thought that each of you should get a copy of the commendation. So I think probably the easiest way is, I'll give one to you and shake your hand. How's that? And I think that I'd like to present the master copy. I think that the kids in town deserve to be recognized for the, for the good things they do, and I hope we have more opportunities to do this in the future. So I welcome the opportunity to come down tonight and do this. Thank you all.
Thank you, Representative Abbott, and thank you, Link Together. Keep up the good work. And I bet you guys have homework, right? With that, um, if we could get Emery and Garrett back up here.
How are you? I don't know if I can follow that up. Um, I'm here tonight because, um, Emery and Garrett was hired to do groundwater studies for us to look for new sources of groundwater. And they were also hired to do a phase-two evaluation of groundwater recharge using river water for our Bennett and Sewell wells. And they have completed the phase-two study, which is pretty comprehensive. And what has actually come out of this study is, is they gave it to the state to review, and the state really liked what they saw. They thought it looked like such a really good project. So, um, they asked, the state asked me to submit a application for American Recovery Act for green infrastructure because they felt that this fit was a very good fit for that. So I submitted, um, the next phase, um, of the project, which is a six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar project. And we, um, we ended up number two on the list. So we're eligible for six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of American Recovery Act green infrastructure money. And what that means to the town is that we would, um, we would have to pay back half the six hundred. So we'd have to pay back three hundred and eleven. It'd be a fifty percent match grant. Um, so I've asked, um, I've asked James Emery to come and give you a background and, and give you an update of what this report is and what they've been doing and what the next step is. So.
Hi. Um, there's two, two presentations that Ed had asked us to consider. And so we have, as you know, we're hitting the water issue on two fronts. The first front is, is developing additional supplies because right now New Market is entirely dependent upon two wells. And if one of those wells went out or was contaminated, you would have a serious problem in, in supplying the town with, with water. So we're looking at additional sources of water, and we have been over the course of the last couple of years. And we have identified two sites that are of high yield that are in the process of being developed and permitted through DES. The presentation we have tonight is split into two parts, and I just want to give the council the option to pass on the first part if they, if they wish. The first part is the exploration and update on the exploration program, where we are and what we're planning on doing this summer during the dry spell so we can do our pumping tests and get our, our things online and get our permits hopefully at the beginning of next year. The second part is the artificial recharge. And I want to mention that, as we said, we're, we're attacking this water supply from two fronts. One is additional source, and one is to take and actually skim water off the Lamprey River during the wintertime and pump it into a recharge basin near the existing Sewell and Bennett wells so that we can enhance the overall yield of those wells. As you may know, that over the course of the pumping of these wells, we've actually dropped the water table down about fourteen feet in places, which puts us into a little bit of a dire condition during long-term droughts. So the artificial recharge, which John will talk about, would offset those mining of water, so to speak, and enhance the overall productivity of the wells as well as the long-term sustainability of the water table in that region. So at this point, I'm just going to ask if the council wants to see both presentations. They're about ten to twelve minutes each, so it'd be about twenty minutes for a slideshow, or we can cut it to just the artificial recharge. I'd like to see both. I'd like to see both. Okay, very good.
You had mentioned, could you mention the, the loss of the water table?
Yes, the water table has been recorded to be ten to fourteen feet lower during the dry summer times than it was historically when we, when the, uh, the wells were first put in place. And that's what stim, uh, that started the process of considering artificial recharge, of trying to take water from the river and put it into these basins. It was, there was attempted before through the treatment plant, but the, uh, there were issues with the treatment process that contaminated the groundwater, so we couldn't. Now we're talking about doing raw water. And I will say, and, and I think it's, it's, it's a real testament to the town of New Market. When we, when Sean put the application in for the funding at, at the state for this green infrastructure, this project, the artificial recharge, was ranked number two in the state, uh, which is, which is extremely high rating for, for this type of project. It is one of the first of its kind in the state, and it's certainly leading the way as a model for other communities to consider. With that, I'm going to let John speak. He's the project manager. Peter Garrett, who is my partner, was supposed to speak on the artificial recharge, but he had a death in the family, and so he is, John's going to cover for him tonight.
What I'd like to do tonight is give a, as Jamie said, a fairly short summary of the groundwater exploration program that we have been conducting for the last couple of years. And then that will be followed by, quickly after that, a, a short presentation on what we've done for artificial recharge. Some of you have heard the, the story before, so I've tried to, uh, kind of cut it down to its essence. The groundwater exploration program was conducted to develop additional groundwater supplies that would supplement the groundwater obtained from the bedrock and sewer wells in the sanding gravel aquifer. And the other objective is that, um, they, this, the development of bedrock wells would enhance groundwater resource protection by developing groundwater resources in a separate aquifer from your existing water resources. The work was conducted in a series of phases, which I'll just summarize now. In the first phase was a study in which we, um, conducted a preliminary hydrogeologic evaluation, and the goal of that was the selection of groundwater development zones within the town. We incorporated background data compilation of existing maps and reports. We also did some detailed geologic mapping within the town. We conducted bedrock fracture fabric and lineament analyses, and we investigated potential contaminant threats within the town. And all this data was compiled, and we selected areas within the town where we thought, um, that were favorable, most favorable for, uh, conducting additional groundwater resource development studies in them, and selected our bedrock groundwater development zones. As you can see from this map, the blue line is the outline of the town of New Market. And our study ended up with eight groundwater development zones distributed throughout the town. Two of those were considered secondary. And so, um, within those zones, we proceeded on to our geophysical surveys, and the objective there was to do some really additional detailed geologic mapping in specific zones and in concert with geophysical surveys to select test well targets. And the lines that are shown over these zones indicate that we conducted surveys within four of the groundwater development zones. And the decision to go within those zones was, uh, in large part worked out with the past seat council and also where we could get property permission to do our surveys. We did, uh, three types of geophysical surveys, magnetic and VLF surveys, and also electrical resistivity survey lines. And I won't show you too much of that, but I just wanted to give you a feel for the type of results we get. These are models that we created using the electrical resistivity lines, and what they are basically is a cross section of the earth below two of the survey lines that we ran. And it shows the distribution of electrical resistivity of the subsurface materials. And you can see near the subsurface in these models, there's a dark blue area, and that's the unconsolidated sediments that are fine sands to clays. And then in the subsurface are red areas and brown areas, which are the bedrock. And the green areas that crosscut the bedrock are lowers, lower resistivity, and they're often associated with fracture zones that can be water-bearing. And on the top profile model is well two B, and then on the bottom is NGE one A. And those are the proposed production wells that we are presenting tonight. And you can see they were located based on two of the anomalies that we found. The results of the geophysical surveys and also our phase-one analyses resulted in the selection of fourteen proposed test well sites throughout the town. And we proceeded with the next phases of work, three, four, and five, in which we drilled several of the exploratory test wells. We converted one of the test wells into a production well, NGE two B, and we conducted preliminary testing to determine, to get a first look at what the yield and water quality would be from the groundwater resources. This slide shows the, um, the locations of the proposed wells within zones NGE one and two. And, um, these are located in the, in the south-central portion of town. You can see there Grapevine Hill Road and Ash Swamp Road is the one that kind of goes from northwest, west to southeast. And the yellow dots are the wells that we actually drilled. And as I indicated, NGE one A and in the southern zone and NGE two B in the northeastern zone are the proposed production well sites. This is a picture of the air rotary rig that was used for the drilling. We actually had to bring a second compressor on site because of the high yield of the wells. And this just shows the method we're using for measuring the water yield, the preliminary water yield. They evacuate the water out with air from the well, and then we created that impoundment, and we can determine the water rate as it flows through the weir that's shown there in the front of the picture. And this is about three hundred and fifty gallons per minute flowing through there right now. Um, what, this is a, just table information on the wells, two wells, uh, production wells we're proposing. And I wanted to emphasize the yields that we are going to, we anticipate from these wells. The NGE two B well was drilled first as an exploratory test well. It's the second line there. It's a six-inch diameter well. And the airlift yield at the end of that was two hundred and twenty gallons a minute. We then reamed out the well to a larger diameter, just re-drilled in the same well and enlarged it to eight inches, and the yield increased to three hundred and fifty-two gallons per minute. And these are airlift yields that will have to be tested further through our, our next phases of work to determine a safe yield for the well. The NGA one A well down at the bottom was drilled as a six-inch diameter well. It's a hundred and thirty-five gallons per minute. Our plan is to go back to that well this summer when the land dries out around it and ream that out to a production well, um, so that we can hopefully get an increase in yield there as well. The, uh, we took this information from the first five phases and submitted it in a, summarized it and submitted it in a preliminary hydrogeologic report to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES. And that report was the first part, first step in a water withdrawal permit application for these wells. And that was submitted last April of 2008. And, um, the, um, work that we will be completing this summer, in the summer and the fall, will be the determination of the sustainable yield of the proposed production wells, and we'll be doing more rigorous water qualities analyses on those wells. And the pumping test will incorporate a seven-day pumping test of both wells. There'll be, uh, the start of the test will be staggered by one day, and then they'll be pumped together for a seven-day time period, and that creates a maximum stress on the aquifers in the region so we can look at impacts. We'll be monitoring on and off-site wells and also surface water locations. The, we'll be using automated water level recording equipment like Jeff in the picture on the left is installing in a monitoring well. And we'll be monitoring, um, probably upwards of thirty or so domestic wells in the areas proximal, proximal to the, or surrounding the proposed production well sites. And we haven't determined which locations we'll be doing yet. We'll be sending out letters requesting permission to do that to everyone within three thousand feet of each well. We'll also be installing some shallow posimeters to just monitoring locations, and they go into the wetland materials, so we will be using these to determine wetland impacts or potential wetland impacts. And unfortunately, as part of this procedure, we had to apply for a major wetland dredge and fill permit. We have done that, and we have permission, they approved the permit, to proceed ahead with the installation, and we hope to do that in the next two or three weeks. We'll compile all the data from the pumping test, all the water level, water level impacts and our analyses of those impacts, and we'll use that to determine the zone of contribution around the well, the area which is impacted by the pumping. And then that will lead to the delineation of the wellhead protection area around that, which can be used in the future for educational materials to different potential adverse impact, or potential contaminant threats in the area. And then we'll also be looking at the potential wetland impacts and, of course, determining the safe yield of the well from the, from the data that we collect. Once we've completed our analyses, we'll submit a final hydrogeologic report to the DE, DES for their approval. We hope that this will be completed in the fall of 2009 to the spring of next year. And that report will lead to the approval of the proposed production wells for water withdrawal permit. And it may be that that will require a public hearing, although no one requested one for the preliminary report, so I don't know that that will necessarily occur. So that's, that's kind of the quick, quick look at the bedrock exploration, and, um, I'd like to just move on to artificial recharge, and then if you don't mind, we could just answer questions about both of them at the end. The next phase of work in the artificial recharge study is Phase Three, and as Sean and Jamie were talking about, this will be funded in part by the ARR-A money that, uh, will be, that has, we're in the first stage of the approval for that, I should say. And, um, as Jamie mentioned, the reason that artificial recharge is being considered here is because, um, through the historic records from the Sewell and Bennett wells has shown that the historic pumping at those sites has resulted in a lowering of the water table, the, kind of the local regional water table around those wells by as much as fourteen feet, which brought it dangerously close to the top of the screen within the Bennett well. And artificial recharge, the use of artificial recharge will be used to reverse this trend of lowering water levels, and also to enhance the productivity of the production wells so that potentially, um, we feel that a higher pumping rate could be used or more water could be withdrawn from the wells. And the main, uh, objective is here, as Jamie mentioned, water will be pumped from the Lamprey River during periods of high flow from kind of late fall, winter, and spring. River during periods of high flow from kind of late fall, winter, and spring from the Lamprey River and it'll be put into the, into the artificial recharge basin during that time. And then come early summer, you stop the recharge and just continue pumping and the water that's built up will be, serve as recharge to the wells. This shows a topographic map of the site, the location of the Bennett and the Sewell wells on either north and south side of Route 152. Newmarket's in the right-hand side of the map and the Lamprey River is just to the west, in the western portion, right under the word Lee. And that's the area where we anticipate that the intake will be for the recharge. The yellow line is the limits of the sand and gravel deposit that forms the Newmarket Plains Aquifer and that's the hydrologic unit that the wells obtained their water resources from. This just gives you a quick look of kind of a rough layout. The intake location would be on the Lamprey River, as I mentioned, on the west side or left side of this photograph. There will be a pipeline that will be laid on the ground surface for the most part along the north side of Route 152. That will lead to a recharge basin that's shown in the aerial photograph just to the southwest of the Bennett well. Here's another view of that, the proposed artificial recharge site is an old sand pit, which the photograph shows on the right-hand side. It's partially overgrown with vegetation right now and that will eventually be removed to some extent to create recharge basins within that area. We've already conducted several studies as part of our application for the groundwater discharge permit. One is to get a rough estimate at the beginning of how much water you can add to a recharge basin at this location before basically it starts to pond on the surface. And so we conducted percolation testing in, within pits or trenches within the gravel pit and determined how much water could be put in or had an estimate of that. We also wanted to get a feeling for how much natural filtration will occur when you add surface water to the aquifer. It'll run through the sands to the well and those sands are natural filtration media. And so we did some testing over, over where George's office, George's office is and we had some, two sand-filled, or two columns that are shown on the right-hand side here that are filled with sand from the site. And we took water from the Lamprey River and throughout the year and added that to the top of the column on the left and it flowed down through there and then we pumped it up on the right-hand side. And we took water samples before we put it in at the bottom of the first column and at the top of the last one and analyzed those for specific water quality parameters such as color and dissolved organic compounds or content. And the objective here was to see how much filtration would occur as we added to the sand. And the results of these preliminary studies show that the sediments at the proposed sites for the artificial recharge basin are very transmissive and they will not be the limiting factor in determining the amount of artificial recharge used in the future. And also the natural filtration of the recharge water by the sediments in the aquifer will beneficially improve the water and the surface water, the quality of the surface water added to the artificial recharge basin such that by the time that reaches the production wells, it will be, it will be a potable water quality. The next phase we did was developing a numerical model of the aquifer. And we did that by initially by calibrating the model parameters that you can change using a seven-year record of water use record, water use record from the Bennett Sewell, so how much water was pumped from those wells each day plus precipitation records for that time period. And that period of record goes from 2001 when there was drought to years after that when there was above-average precipitation and then some years where there was average. So we, we were able to match each one of those conditions with our model so we feel it's a rigorous model for different types of climatic conditions. And then we use that model once we calibrate it to ask questions, to simulate things. How much water can you add before water starts ponding on the surface? Or how much, how much higher can you pump the wells before you draw it down too much? Those sort of questions. And one thing we tried was how much, what, how much would the water level rise in the aquifer if we add recharge for six months compared to if we don't add it? So if we just pump those wells for a year's time period, one simulation, we don't add any artificial recharge and the other simulation, we add it for six months, what's the difference in the water table as a result of that? And these show water level contour maps, they're color contoured maps. The contour map in the upper-left-hand corner is the simulation without any artificial recharge and then in the bottom right is with artificial recharge. And there'll be three slides just like this. And the red color, as you can see on the scale, is high elevations. It's 95 feet plus and then the blue is 55 feet of elevation. So at the, at the start of the, at the start of the test, the simulation started in November of 2001, which was a drought period. The water table at the Bennett well was approximately 70 feet in both these models. It's just the starting, so it's static water level. But you can see in the bottom right that where the arrows are going out radially, that's an area, that's where the recharge basin and they're starting to build up a mound there and water's flowing away from it in all directions. And then at the end of the recharge season, after six months of adding recharge at a rate of .5 MGD per day, you can see here that the water table around the recharge basin is much higher. It's, it's above 90 feet and the area of red, which is the high water table, is much more extensive in the model where we add recharge compared to the one that recharge was not added. And the red in that is just from natural recharge, precipitation, rain. And you can also see that the water level around the Bennett well was 81 feet at the end of this recharge period compared to 70 feet without the recharge. So we've built up an extra 11 feet of potential recharge or water elevation that can be used during the dry period. And then at the, so at that point, we turned off the artificial recharge in the model and natural rain stopped because it was drought. It's kind of a typical summer scenario where you have very little rain during the summer, you store it during the early year and then drain that storage. And so naturally, the water levels in both models go down because you don't have any recharge. But it's interesting at the end, what's, what's important at the end is that the water level at the Bennett well at the end of the modeling is 70 feet versus 65 feet where the recharge did not occur earlier in the year. So we've built up a surplus in the water table, in the water level throughout that area of five feet. And of course, then you start recharging the next year and that five feet is preserved. You add, you could potentially add in this model five feet each year as you build it up higher and higher. So again, it's a way that we're going to maintain a specific water level, a favorable water level within this aquifer. The Sewell is also benefiting. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, it's 55 feet where recharge occurred versus 52 feet where recharge did not occur. So even though the recharge site is closer to the Bennett well, there is a increase in water level elevation at the Sewell well. And then, you know, we asked some basic questions or this helped us to answer a series of questions. One is, is the artificial recharge that's supplied at the Bennett side a benefit to the Sewell? And as I just indicated, yes, it is. There's a ratio of about 60%. So whatever the water level increases at the Bennett, 60% of that will occur at the Sewell. And will artificial recharge allow more water to be pumped from the Newmarket Plains Aquifer on a regular basis? And the model suggests that indeed, yes. And we anticipate a potential increase of the total productivity between the two wells or for the, for two wells of 70% or around 350,000 GPD or .35 million gallons per day. And right now, the average pumping rate's about .5 MGD. So at the conclusion of phase two, we submitted a hydrogeologic report to the DES summarizing the results of our study. Based on this, a groundwater discharge permit for the recharge, artificial recharge was approved by the DES and they also approved the proposed phase three work task for further evaluation of artificial recharge. Again, our overview map here, the task one of the phase, phase three is divided into a series of tasks. Task one incorporates the work for the intake location and it would include the permitting and design and installation of temporary Lamprey River water intake. And this would include such things as examining potential sites along that river segment that we're interested in, installing borings to evaluate the nature of the characteristics of the local sediments to see where the most transmissive areas are, for example. Evaluate and design intake, the intake structure with provisions to protect against ice damage because this will go through a winter period. And we'll have to obtain a wetland permit through the DES for the location and then finally install the temporary surface water intake in the Lamprey River. And we'll also have to design a pumping test for this site. It's, it is just a temporary pump house, so it'll be, we'll try to make it small in size and make it unattrusive. But it will have to be insulated and heated to protect things from freezing during the wintertime. And three-phase power will have to be taken to the house to run the centrifugal pump that will pump the water out of the Lamprey River to the site. This shows George looking at a centrifugal pump that's with the Dover system. They have an artificial recharge system that they use just to give you an idea of the, the size of the equipment we're talking about. And then if we look at task two, things associated with the pipeline installation. As I mentioned before, this is what we envisioned for the pipeline. It'll be a temporary pipeline run on top of the ground surface except where we intercept driveways between the Lamprey River and the recharge basin. And on my way here tonight, I was counting them up. There are about 14 or so that will, will have to go underneath. And you can see how they've just trenched underneath the driveway or underneath the road, in this case at the upper corner there. And the design and installation of the pipeline will require engineering for those driveway crossings, protection against freezing. The idea is if the pump turned, turned off during the wintertime, make it self-draining so that the water doesn't pond in the pipe and freeze before you can get it going again. We'll have to obtain some access easements from the DOT and probably one or two property owners and planning for the pipe drainage in the artificial recharge basin, just what that configuration's going to look like as it goes into the basin itself. And then the other task three involves the recharge basin itself. And this work will be, include removing the subsurface structure, which is a pipeline basically of screens underneath the subsurface that was used for the 2002 and 2004 artificial recharge experiment. And then the design and the construction of the recharge basin or basins. And these can be pretty simple. This is the recharge basin that's used in Dover. It's a depression in a old sand pit. You can see the discharge line coming in for the surface water. They, in the bottom right-hand corner, it's wintertime, they've actually filled it up so much that it's ponded. And then as they pump that through the air, the pond gets lower and lower until the sand's exposed and the water level continues to lower beneath the ground surface. And the bottom of the pit just needs to be cleaned out every few years as the silt starts to gather from the surface water. It settles out at the surface, so you just scrape that off and rejuvenate the surface of those. Task four is the actual field pilot test. And this is the actual operation of the artificial recharge for one season and it will include the pumping of Lamprey water to the recharge basins and no doubt the pumping rate will vary during the year as, as we do, as we find out how the aquifer responds. And monitoring of water levels and observations will occur so that we can incorporate that data into our model that we created before. And we'll also be monitoring the Lamprey, Lamprey River water quality and the groundwater quality from the wells to see how much filtration's going on and make sure there aren't any issues there. And then that data will be used for recalibrating the groundwater flow model more accurately so that it can be used for further simulations if needed. And that's, that's the conclusion of my summary about them. So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
One thing I want to emphasize is that the portion of this that's being funded is the pilot study, which is John mentioned, we had a phase one and a phase two which is already completed, funded and that's been submitted to the state. This next phase that we're actually talking about, it'll go to the AWR, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, is just the phase three, which is the last bit that John reviewed, which includes the temporary pipeline and the temporary intake structure and things of that sort. I just want to make sure the council realizes that that is, we've gone through the modeling. Everything looks good from the first part, but now we have to do the actual field pilot test to confirm that the modeling is correct and that it's actually going to work and there's no fatal flaws before you invest the money down the road for this permanent pipeline. One thing I found out today in talking to the state is that there is a consideration being given for a second round of funding. And that probably will come down another year from now. But I think this project has gotten a lot of attention at the state and likelihood is, is possible that if you get to the next level, that there's going to be money available to also help, I can't guarantee that, but to help on the next phase, which will be permanent construction. So with that said, I, if you have questions about the process, I, there's also, this is a new program and there is a, you're not guaranteed the money yet from AWR. There's always strings attached, it seems. We have to go through an environmental review. So the next step that we're going to be faced with is there are some forms that I've sent down to Ed and Sean that we need to fill out. One is an environmental form and they send it out to an intergovernmental agency which says they'll take our project, send it to Fish and Games, send it to Bureau, a couple of bureaus within the DES and they will all look at it and say, yes, it passes muster. I mean, they've already seen a lot of this, but they've got to go through this process. Then once the DES, and they have about 30 to 45 days to do that, once they say this is a good project, then it goes out for public comment for 30 days. At that time, then we have to go through the forms of authorization to fund it and then we can proceed. The dates are very important in this reinvestment act. The date, we need to move forward relatively quickly because the way that it's set up, they're absolutely drop-dead date is December of this year to have everything in order. But you got scored high because it was thought that it could be done sooner than that, maybe by, you know, in the next 60 days. I also did not realize that, and this is something we probably need to discuss, is that if you choose to proceed with this project, your portion of it will be 311,000. But you have to actually go to borrow the entire amount of which you send invoices to the state and they will reimburse you all the way through to the 622,000, which is what was the estimate. But you only have to pay them back 311,000. The interim financing on that is 1.1% for the time period they use it. The five-year loan agreement, which is what was, what we had applied for, is at 1%. So it's a very attractive lending rate, but it is contingent upon the timing because the way this stimulus money is trying to be worked is it's trying to go through the system relatively fast. So I just want to give you a little bit of the nuts and bolts of it too because it's different than I really anticipated and there's still a review process. So there's about 60 days that you have to go through. There's still a possible fatal flaw that the state could come back and say, no. But right now, you're rated number two, so. For now, just let you ask some questions about.
Okay. Vice Chairman Bergeron?
I've got a bunch of little questions. We're also pursuing, looking at other wells. And if, if we do indeed get some other production wells going, that will give the existing wells a time to recharge and, you know, we can kind of give them a rest. You're also dealing with the other well studies. So if we were to get one of those online, would this whole project be necessary? Do you still see any real benefit? I'm sure there's some benefit, but.
Yeah.
Because we're talking a temporary installation, not a permanent installation, which is my later question, how much that might cost.
It's a good question, it's a very good question. And I think that the answer is, is one that probably needs some consideration in terms of long-term. I'm looking at, we're involved with a lot of these groundwater development projects of permitting in the state. Things are changing rapidly at the state in terms of legislation and how they're permitting water supplies. As you know, the Lamprey River in-stream flow rule issue has become a major task and a major effort and investigation made by the state and others to limit, so to speak, the amount of water that could be actually withdrawn from the Lamprey River and its watershed. Now, we're found, you know, our wells are in the Lamprey River watershed as well as the fact that we're talking about taking some water out of the Lamprey River, in-stream flow rules, from the Lamprey River itself. It's clear in the discussions and so on and Ed and we've been involved in making comments to the in-stream flow rules and it's been. to the in-stream flow rules and it's been postponed for two years because enough people were concerned about how the process was going about, not considering public water supply and protecting the rights for utilities to use water. Because ultimately, the way it's written right now, the fish and certain other habitat, biohabitats will have precedence over public water utilities for the development of additional supply. So I think that's what's going to happen, is that you're going to see a very big change in your ability to develop additional sources. Now, I don't want to scare you into saying that you may be restricted from the future, but I, there's no question in the last four years, the difficulty of developing new sources is 100% more difficult today than it was four years ago. And I fully anticipate that four or five or six years down the road, when the Lamprey River in-stream flow rule is taken to effect, and the difficulty with the large groundwater withdrawal permitting process, which is becoming more of a game of fodder back and forth between various concerned citizens groups and towns and utilities and commercial activities, that the allocation schemes for future water withdrawals is going to be more difficult. So there's an advantage to securing your long-term water supplies today, not necessarily spending the, you may not want to go ahead and spend the month, the big money, which will be, I think we estimated that you were leading to the phase four. Right now, we had estimated about $3 million for the permanent installation of the line from the Lamprey to this system with the recharge basins and the intakes, the permanent structure. You may postpone that for a long time. As long as you get, I think, as long as you get your foot in the door with a permit that says, look, we've gone through the process of finding the source, permitting the source, you get into the in-stream flow rule as an existing, not as an existing source, but they're going to have to recognize that you've invested capital funds to secure that possible right.
So we are grandfathered in a way when we get that permit?
You are, if you have a well, your Sewell and Bennett wells right now, even though they're in the Lamprey River watershed, are part of the equation for the allocation scheme coming down the road. It's already, because you're a dependent one. And if you put in your new sources apply, and that's one of the things we were waving arms at, because you're not the only ones. There are other people trying to develop their water resources right now, saying, wait a second, you've got to give some, some, put some importance to future development of public water supplies. And the reality is, is that that's, that was left out entirely in the Lamprey River in-stream flows. There is no protection for public, new public water supplies or even to this end, it's not even a consideration as part of the write-up. That may change because we've made a lot of complaints about it, to get you guys involved, not just you, but Durham and other, other folks who are in the same boat. So if we're successful in the groundwater development and the bedrock, that's going to diminish the need for you to put in the artificial recharge tomorrow. But if you don't have, if for some reason we hit a fatal flaw, and that's why we've been going at this, you know, kind of simultaneously, and there's still some, I mean, we're at the real key part now, the summer, testing these new wells. If there's some fatal flaw to that process, you've got the artificial recharge. The thing the artificial recharge doesn't do for you is give you duplicity in source. Because if you ever had a problem over there, whether we have artificial recharge or not, you don't have another source. Because that artificial recharge is not going to fix a contamination problem. It's not going to fix a catastrophic failure. So I, my suggestion and my thinking in this is that you've got, this kind of came along as a surprise, the stimulus money, we, Sean put it in as an option. I think you got some free money that may allow you to get further along than you might have expected. And that gives you at least a point in time that you've fixed, you've got all your ducts in a row, you've got your easements, you've got your temporary intake, you see if it works, and you've done your pilot test, you've got that egg in your basket. And we get to figure out if it actually is 350,000 gallons of additional capacity or not. If you try to get that done and you get your final answers, you can put that in, secure it on the side, and you have this duplicity in source in the other sort, in developing of another source. So I think that from the standpoint of where we are now, it's still good to continue those parallel tracks. But I think you have a really good point that at that point, you may choose, that's a five-year project, or that's somewhere down the, I don't know, that's certainly a reasonable tack. But I am concerned about these in-stream flows and how it will impact your ability to take water from the Lamprey River and to take water from the watershed.
Do you have permission?
Oh, absolutely.
Counselor Bottomen?
Jim asked some of the questions I was going to ask. Two questions. The intake is in the Town of Lee. And are we currently negotiating with the Town of Lee to withdraw water from there?
We've had some discussions with them. They are supportive of the town having the ability to remove water from the Lamprey at this point. We haven't identified per se where we were going to do it. We just wanted to know how willing they are and if there was going to be any cost. Because obviously, it's within the Town of Lee and they could potentially use the Lamprey River as a water source, although they don't ever anticipate they would do that. So our discussions have been that, A, yes, they are, and B, they would like to have some discussion with the town on how the two communities can work together in a mutually beneficial way for us to remove water and through their allowance and for us to maybe partner with them on a project that would be of importance to them.
Okay. And a good part of that too, and it's a part of that question, if those negotiations with Lee completely fail, or we see that there's no progress, then you don't spend any more money on it. You know, because that's kind of the key component to get that agreement and the easements and all the things that we need to do to run that temporary pipeline.
And, and the second question I had was, assuming that everything works out and that there is a decision made to go forward with a permanent recharge, you had mentioned the cost of roughly $3 million to do that. Sean, what, what effect does that have on the rate payers? Have we done any analysis on the wells and the recharge, what impact it's going to have on rates? I know you're doing a rate study, it's been ongoing. Has it incorporated all this stuff in it?
Ed and I spoke earlier that we really need to sit down and look at the projects in the Water Department and pick and choose and try and figure out what the schedule is. Doesn't mean that we, we do all at once, we try and come up with a schedule that would fit New Market and fit what's best for the Water Department. So rates wouldn't see this major, major effect on them.
Right, but I guess my question is just that, no matter what project it is, whether it's this or the water line, the new tank, whatever, is there analysis done to find out what the impact is on rates before we go forward too far? Do we have these numbers anywhere? Or they, have they been done yet?
Right now, if we move forward with this project, the money would be used out of CIP, Capital Reserve. If we move forward and then nothing would be done, we'd have to look at the three projects that actually are on the water tank, the groundwater, and the recharge. Right now, with loans, you're talking about $70,000 per million on a loan right now. And I know we're retiring some debt. We, we've been putting a lot of money into Capital Reserve. So Ed and I had a lot of discussions earlier and we need to sit down and evaluate that. That's not, yeah, no, we're not trying to, we're not trying to stick our foot out there too far.
Oh, no, I understand that. I just think that any, any decision we make on any of these things needs to be, that needs to be part of the equation, what the effect is on rate payers.
Yes, yes. Oh, that's huge. That's, there's no question on that. I will tell you, back in the, in the late 90s, when we had the drought, the Sewell screen, the depth of screen, you know, is around 68 feet. And we had to keep lowering the low water cutoff, the well automatically shutting off. And we were down about one foot from the screen. We were about one foot away of having no water from that well. So it's, it's important that we, that not only we make good decisions, but we need to try and move along on this. It's important.
All set. Before I go to the vice chair, again, any other counselors have anything? Yes.
Is the, the two new preliminary new wells, are they in the aquifer plains as delineated by Dufrance Henry's study?
No, these are separate, this is separate aquifer altogether.
It's a separate aquifer.
And one, the Newmarket Plains aquifer is actually sand and gravel aquifer, and the wells that we're putting in are bedrock wells.
Bedrock wells. Are there any active gravel pits near these wells?
No.
No. And with bedrock wells, do you have a higher incidence of arsenic or radon that would have to be treated usually, or?
Well, there are areas that we, that do have high arsenic. We have done some preliminary testing on the wells today and the water quality has been excellent. But that's one of the reasons why I got to get through the testing this summer, is to find out when we put a real stress on it during a low-flow condition, do we see changes in the quality of the water? And that would, could be and could dictate a fatal flaw to the process.
And if we didn't get permission from Lee for the recharge, could we use one of these wells here for recharge? It wouldn't be feasible.
Yeah, probably not feasible, yeah, in terms of the distance and the cost and so forth.
And would the cost of connecting these wells to our water supply equal the same amount that we would spend for a temporary recharge system?
That cost has not, because we haven't gotten through the final negotiations with the landowners, the costs haven't been, those costs of the interconnects have not been put together yet. And I think, in all honesty, the intent was, once you determine if, if the artificial recharge is a definite possibility and that the groundwater can be permitted with a groundwater withdrawal permit, you've got X capital cost to hook up for the next one, which we know is about $3 million for the artificial recharge. And then you've got whatever it is, $1 million or whatever it is for the, for the groundwater, you make that decision as to which it's going to be. I don't know what, we haven't, we haven't put together any numbers for the interconnect for the groundwater system, but they're pretty close to the existing distribution system. What's the distance, Sean?
Well, the, what's the McIntosh well, is that about 1,500 feet or something like that? And then the Tucker well's another 2,500?
Tucker well's a lot.
That's the crow flies.
It was a lot farther.
Yeah, if you have to follow the road, it's a lot farther.
And if from perspective, the artificial recharge is about 6,800 feet, so, 6,700 feet. So you know that the distance is, you know, longer for the artificial recharge. So don't take my $1 million as a number, because I don't know. I just, I just know it's going to be, should be less expensive.
Okay. Vice Chairman Bergeron?
Just a couple of little bits and pieces here. One thing that Eric had mentioned, also, we have to worry about the rate study for the future proposed sewer plant upgrades, which could be significant.
Which, which, just by the way, we have a meeting tomorrow to go over the first sort of round of what we're seeing.
And what the rate impact would be?
Right.
Oh, that was just, that wasn't even a question, really. Is there a three-phase available on that road? Being a little quiet country road, I don't know if there is.
There's three phases at the wells right now.
Okay, good. This is being done in Dover right now?
Yes.
How successful has that been? How long have they been doing it?
They've been doing it for quite a few years.
For years.
Quite a few years.
Where are they pumping from?
The Isinglass. The Isinglass, yeah. They had two locations at first, and I think they're down to one location now.
Well, almost a ongoing sand pit area, seeing the processing water as their recharge source and the sand pit operation, I guess, is going to be closing.
Terminated. I can't remember the numbers, but they saw a substantial increase in production at their well, instantaneously when they started to pump.
And just one other thing. How are we going to keep this temporary line from freezing in the middle of the winter at 6,700 feet?
You've got to pump it.
Just keep it continuing.
You've got to keep running.
Like a backup generator, just in case we lose power.
Yeah, and we're talking about drain it, have an emergency drain, because otherwise it'd be a, it'd be a major mess.
I guess it'll be designed so it doesn't develop airlocks and the water can just flow out, out the end.
Thanks.
Counselor Bottomen?
I have two other questions, I guess. Assuming that the recharge were to be successful, is a recharge basin considered a wellhead for wellhead protection radius? Do you, do you develop a protection radius around that if, do you need to?
No. What, the interesting thing with the model, though, is we've been able to define the, I mean, we showed you a very, very basic thing tonight, but we have the groundwater flow network from the injection on this model based on seven years of actual data and calibrated. So we know where the groundwater is moving. You're not capturing at all. You won't capture all that groundwater. Some of it's going to go off to a wetland, some of it's going to go into a spring, but you're going to capture enough to, to make a positive benefit. So we have a very good handle and ultimately, the result will be to put a wellhead protection, yeah, around the, around those wells. And we'll be using that modeling data to do so and the pilot testing as well.
I mean, is that all on Town of Newmarket property now? Or would that?
Yes.
That doesn't, that wouldn't infringe on private property at this point?
No.
No, not at this stage. Okay. And the last question I have is wetlands with recharge. The other towns that have been successful in recharging, do they see an increase in wetlands and surrounding properties or is that a byproduct of this?
There hasn't been a very good study on that. And this will actually be the most comprehensive artificial recharge study done in the state. They kind of just threw a pipe in the ground, had a gravel pit, started pumping water out and lo and behold, they had a benefit. That's basically what happened.
That's something that we're going to be looking at, though, as part of our study in some.
Some of, some of the modeling suggests that the historic springs that really got frankly dried up when you started pumping the existing wells, they may start flowing again to some extent during some times of the year. Because like Jamie said, we don't, we don't capture all the water, but the natural drainage will go out to existing streams or wetlands.
Thank you.
And that's why the state likes it so much.
Yeah.
That's why the state likes it so much.
Why they?
Because it's going to help the wetlands restore the wetlands back to their natural.
Yeah, but if, I look at it the other way, if you own property and you end up with wetlands now.
Well, no, 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 it's not.
It's not a good thing.
They're already wetlands. They're already wetlands.
It's just going to, it's just going to become more wet. That's what I'm asking, okay.
They're going to bring them back to their natural state.
Suddenly, I can't live in my house.
No, no.
Some of the water may eventually drain back into the Lamprey River, actually.
Yeah, and that's what they're looking at.
Yeah.
All set, Counselor? Thank you. Counselor Minutelli?
Motion.
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the, the ARRA funds in the amount of $622,000 for field testing for the artificial recharge for Market Plains Aquifer.
Second.
Town Administrator?
I was just going to add what, what John just said, that Peter Garrett, when he was here, made mention of the fact that the water that we would be putting on to the Bennett well would naturally find its way back to the Lamprey River. So there's a beneficial effect for, you know, the town removing it at one spot, filling our well, and then also then, you know, the whole area back towards Lamprey on the other side gets filled back in that direction. So it's really a win-win situation when you look at it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Counselor Minutelli?
Aye.
Counselor Bottomen?
Aye.
Counselor Cox?
Aye.
Counselor Dickens?
Aye.
Counselor Bergeron?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranch?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Just one point of clarification, I, do we need to go to a special town meeting?
Yes. And we'll begin that process right away.
Okay. All right. Very good. Don't hesitate. If any of the council members have questions, they email us.
Go ahead and start the process.
I'll stop the process and give you all the numbers for this week as to timeline. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is item number four, which actually, I believe, was, was taken care of during public comment. So does anyone see, see a need to have this read or are we all good with it? All set? Okay. Moving on to item number five. Former town councilor's request for reimbursement for copies and certified mailing of town administrator's Town Administrator, did you want to speak in this regard?
If I may, I just, I guess I just, I just want to take a few minutes to address the council relative to what was called the wrap-up of the 90-day review of the town administrator. That became the subject of discussion during the first week of May. The council identified eight items that they wished for me to improve upon and that they would revisit that in April. These items resulted from the performance evaluation that was taken at the end of last year. On April 29th, I was made aware On April 29th, I was made aware that the council would be discussing these items on the May 4th agenda, which was a non-public meeting, and I had sent the then-chair, Dana Glennon, as I did to all the councils that had any email, and to Counsel Quox, indicating that I would be present and would like the meeting to be public under RSA 91A colon 3 Roman 2A, which provides that if an employee requests that a meeting be open, the request to open the meeting shall be granted. On the meeting, on the 4th, the council opened the meeting, and a motion was made that was not to go into public session, but rather that the council would provide the chair and vice chair with their opinion, and the chair as to the, my success in achieving those items, and would provide it to the chair and vice chair, would receive them, and at the end of that meeting, the motion was passed and the council adjourned. I did not, I did not meet with the chair and vice chair to receive the results of that meeting, primarily because the entire council had no knowledge of the input provided by each member, nor did the council as a whole have the opportunity to discuss the results that were submitted. I indicated to the chair that I would not meet with him and the vice chair, but suggested that he drop off the evaluation and I would review it. In short, I did, I did review it, and frankly, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that this council dismiss this evaluation and that we return to the process outlined in section 4.3 of the town council that states, "On a, one year after the initial appointment and annually thereafter, the administrator shall be reviewed by the council. As part of this review, the council and administrator shall mutually agree in writing to agreed goals and objectives for the town and the administrator for the coming year, review the extent to which the administrator has succeeded in meeting the goals and objectives for the preceding year, and determine the reasons why any of those goals were changed or not met during the year," end quote. This is something that has not happened here, and frankly, having received my evaluation by certified mail, return receipt requested, I found somewhat offensive when that was not something that needed to be done, which the chair took upon himself to do, in addition to the fact of, of then going to Staples, from my understanding, and making copies for all the rest of the councilors to receive a copy of the evaluation and the supporting documentation, and then presenting to the town a request for reimbursement of $13.86. And hence, that comes forward, because I think that any of these things could have been done here at the town office. He could have asked for the copier to be turned on, and he could have made the copies and thereby saved the town funds and handed me the evaluation at this point. So, I, I guess after reviewing it, I was disappointed with the, what I read, I didn't think it was fairly balanced, and primarily, I was concerned that the council as a whole didn't have the opportunity to see it. And those are things that I find that I've tried to, and various times, and even in my earlier evaluation, were willingness to meet with the council, to talk with them, and that was something that didn't happen. And I understand it's what happened in the past, but I think there's time to change things, and so I have nothing further to say at this point.
Councilors, any comments or motions, or how would the council like to proceed with Counselor Quox?
I just, I think this whole matter of not giving the former chair $13.86 and bringing it to the council's attention, to me, was like, I discussed with Mr. Wenowski on the phone the other day, was unnecessary. The, you have to remember that there was a vote for the town administrator to meet with the chair and vice chair, and he refused to do that. So, the only recourse to make sure that he got the information from the chair and vice chair was through certified. And, I mean, basically refusing to do what the council asked him to do, in my mind, is insubordination. He was, he was asked to do something, and he did not do it. That'd be equivalent to Mr. Wenowski asking a department head to meet with him for his evaluation, and him just, "I'm not, I'm not going to do it. Mail it to me." You don't do that, I'm sure Mr. Wenowski wouldn't allow a department head to do that. And that is what he did with the town council's vote. So, to bring this up at this point, $13.86, because he's not happy, the way the former chair made copies and mailed it to him, to me is childish and immature, and a waste of our time. And I'll let someone else speak if they have anything to say, because I do have more to say, but.
Counselor Bottomen?
I obviously can't speak to what happened during the review process, you know, previously. I did receive the package, obviously. I read it, it looked to me like there's a lot of, I guess, dissension among the council about whether goals were met or not met. I think we probably have to develop a better way to handle that. And as to the $13.86, I believe it could have been done differently, but I don't think we need to talk about that, I think we should just cut them a check and move on.
Any other councilors? Counselor Carr?
I still, when this all came to pass, I said, I thought that reviews should be done in private, to start with. If, after a review, Mr. Wenowski or anyone else wants to publicize or make totally public whatever anyone said, that's fine, but if we can't sit together as a council and discuss how we feel about an employee, I, I just don't think that, I think that puts an extra burden on councilors to not be able to freely say what they feel. If, if we could work out something where we could have a non-public, discuss it, and then we would all, if, if Mr. Wenowski wanted to have his review then given to him by the whole council, I don't particularly have a problem with that. But I still think that, that to discuss any employee with the employee sitting there, you know, what if, what if there was something terribly wrong, and how would we then approach I'm not saying there is anything terribly wrong, but I'm saying if there was, how would you, go ahead, approaching it?
Counselor Counselor? Counselor Dickens?
Obviously, I wasn't here for that time, just like Counselor Bottomen, but as, as an elected official, the hardest part, though, is sometimes you have to speak up in front of the group and say things, and I know personally, after reading the review, it's, it would be interesting to see which councilors had different comments, and the public owe, we owe that to them so that they know what decisions we make. And if we want to stay non-public, that's, that's the council's, I mean, Mr. Wenowski's choice, as to whether or not it's public or non-public. And the minute he wants it to be public, I think, as a council, we'd have that obligation to say how we feel specifically, because it gives the public that choice to say, "Wow, I, I agree," or "I totally disagree with that person." We have to be held accountable, and when a review comes forward and people disagree in it, but only two people have the final say as what goes forward in that review, you take the power away from the whole group as a whole. So, I, I just think, moving forward, that if Mr. Wenowski wants it to be an open discussion as to whether or not we feel he met his goals, then I believe that we, we owe him that right, because he, per RSA, has, he pointed out that he has that right, so, that's all.
I, I think before we go any further, I'd like to maybe reel this in a little bit, and I think the actual issue is reimbursement or not. So, to some extent, I guess if we can stay on that specific topic, it might be in the council's best interest, and if we want to discuss the other issues later, that could also be arranged. Counselor Minutelli?
Yeah, I was going to, I appreciate you pointing that out, because I was going to say the same thing, although I do agree with some of the points that were, I think it's, you know, there's no, there's no debating that a, a public employee, you know, if the council's going to go into non-public session about the employee, and the employee wants a public hearing, I, I understand people's opinions and, and, you know, when they say, "I don't personally feel that that should be made public," but the reality is that this, that's a statutory right. And I, you know, I think that if that's not, that's not really debatable, and if that's not something that people understand, you know, I think that the council as a whole could benefit from some training from LGC or something. And, and frankly, you know, I might even recommend to the town administrator, you know, that, that be something, you know, with respect to doing a, in a town administrator evaluation. I know LGC has some, you know, some programs that they make available to selectmen in various, various communities, and, you know, I certainly think this, this council would benefit from, from an educational experience like that, so if, if that was something that you were to check into, I would support that, but I, I'd just recommend moving on. There's no, no motion on the floor, we've got other things on the agenda here.
Counselor Carr, is this in regard to the reimbursement?
No. No.
Counselor Bergeron, Vice Chair Bergeron, is this in regards to the reimbursement?
It is.
Okay.
May I make a motion?
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the former council chairman the monies owed to him for the postal reimbursement for the review.
$13.86.
The sum to be $13.86.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Only that I, once again, I agree, it wasn't necessary, but I think $15, we'll just call it good and be done with it.
No other discussion, I'll call for the vote. You're not, your light's not on, is it?
It's on over here.
Okay, it is, I'm sorry, it's not on over here, yes.
Just one last thing I want to say, I can understand why this came here, because I sat at a council meeting as a member of the public when the council suggested that Mr. Wenowski repay money for a phone call or something he had made to the legal council. So, I mean, I can understand the, the dissension that was with the previous council, but it's time to move forward, let's pay it and move on.
Any other discussion? And I apologize, I did not, your light's not working over here. Counselor Quox?
I'm all set.
You're all set. Nothing else, I'll call for the vote.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Counselor Minutelli?
Nay.
Counselor Bottomen?
Aye.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Dickens?
Nay.
Counselor Bergeron?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranch?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-3. Next on the agenda, old business, does anyone have any old business to discuss? Counselor Minutelli?
At our May 20, our previous meeting, I think it was May 20th, where we adopted the rules of procedure, and I was going to recommend to the administrator that, that those rules be placed, if they're not already, be placed on the town website, so that the public can have some access to, I mean, a lot of times, we pass rules that I think, you know, we make reference to, we have the documents in our, our packet, but it's not necessarily meaningful discussion to people who are watching, because they don't have access to those documents, so I think it'd be helpful to, to perhaps have that, that particular document on the town website.
Anyone else for old business?
I had one.
Yes, Counselor Quox?
I was just wondering, when was the last time that council, that town administrator Wenowski did talk to Lee regarding the water?
I think we had initial discussion, Mr. Glennon and I, back in February, and we didn't have anything, because we were looking at the point in time of the negotiations that we were having on, that we've currently had, on the well site itself, and so we just stopped having any further discussion. So, it's just a matter of calling them up and having a meeting with them.
But, but knowing that Emery and Garrett is working on this proposal for DES, for withdrawal and so forth and so on, and you mentioned that Lee did have a, a project request that we could do for reciprocal use for the water from February, I mean, you're talking almost four months, that, that basically, I feel that something should have been done to that point, just to keep, to keep it alive and, and let them know that we're still interested.
I, I don't think it was ever put out there by the council that we weren't still interested. I, I think the council's thoughts throughout this was, with the potential situation with, with the wells being developed and, and things of that nature, that perhaps a recharge would take a backseat, and this actually has really come to light in recent weeks, understanding that we potentially are going to get subsidized for this. So, I think that's why this has really kind of been brought back to the forefront, as opposed to, I, I don't think it was just neglected, I, I can sit here and tell you honestly, that from my perspective as a counselor, that wasn't one of my prime focuses. My focus was to, to see if we could secure the well situation as, as a number-one choice. And, and I think, to some extent, and I may be wrong, councilors that have been here, I, I don't think that the recharge was really something that we were that strong about as far as getting specific answers and, and working arrangements and, and things like that. So, you know, I, I just would like to make that clear, I, I don't think we've just said, you know, we don't need to discuss this, I think it was more of, you know, first of all, we've, we've had a change in the council, we've received this stimulus funding package, possibly, so, you know, that's why it's kind of on the front burner now, as opposed to being on the back burner. And, you know, any other councilors, please, or town administrator, correct me if I'm wrong.
I just thought it would be good PR to, to keep the communications open in case we did decide to go that route.
I don't think they ever really were, were stopped, I think it was, you know, and, and actually, the town administrator does have his line, so maybe.
And, and just to clarify, that the paperwork that I gave you for, you know, the section of the meeting we just concluded, on 4/29, May 29th, was when Sean Gregg filed the paperwork with DES, because they called him up and said, "Look, we're very, very interested, from our perspective, on this project, get the paperwork into us, because the deadline was May 4th." So, he put this through, and that's when we began having the discussion of, "Let's get Emery and Garrett in here and see if the council was willing to support," which means we would have to go back to a special town meeting, because the legislature provided us the opportunity if there was, we, we could, we met, we didn't meet the deadline initially for many of the communities that had the May meeting, March meetings. So, it, it wasn't, you know, it was something that we, it became fast-tracked all of a sudden when there was an opportunity, and it felt it was important to lay it before the council. The, again, the issue with, with Lee is there, I mean, they're, they have a, a project they're looking for, we talked with them a little bit, and when, again, when the discussions started to sort of heat up relative to the well itself, at that point in time, we sort of pushed it back, remember Counselor LaBranch saying at, we're having it known in public, you know, "Let's push the, the recharge back a little bit, because if this is successful, then this is a, a, a really big resource for the community, in addition to the fact that we have the opportunity to put in a, a tower also."
And another question, I was wondering, where are we with the RFP for the generator for the rec department?
That's being, that's been put together, and we just have a clarification, because we're having some, you know, there was the diesel versus propane that we were having, and we also needed to get an idea, in fact, I asked Ms. Glover to talk with Mr. Bergeron relative to the switcher, the switch that we needed to.
Transfer.
Yes, which would be the best that we should go for.
So, so how far are we away from the RFP for that?
Probably fairly soon, be able to get it out in about a week, I hope.
Okay.
But also, I just sent over to, to Julie Glover today, that Homeland Security is making funds available for the purchase of a generator, so we might be able to get something through them.
All right. And also, I... All right. And also, I, when was McNeil Taylor informed that they were, after twenty-eight years, that they were no longer, uh, legal? From what I understand, FX found out in the newspaper?
I understand, yeah.
So you never called them to inform them?
I did call them.
Okay, but he, he stated he found out in the newspaper?
Correct.
So he found out in the newspaper prior to you calling him?
Correct.
Okay. Which, um, because they found out, I believe it was May twelfth, FX sent an email and that he, we understand from the Exeter newsletter that the town has decided to utilize Upton and Hatfield as its general legal counsel and so forth and so on. But I think it might have been nice, after twenty-eight years, that they were informed before they read about it in the newspaper.
I agree. I also had a long conversation with Malcolm McNeil.
I think it should also be noted that the vote was taken on a Wednesday evening, and that paper gets out, some of it gets out as early as Thursday online, so it could have very easily been read that way also. But, you know, just to make that a point. Any other counselors? Oh, I do have a question. Could you just make sure the rules of procedure, a clean set, is also given to all of the counselors?
Yes.
So that they can have it?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else for old business? New business? Counselor Bottomen?
I don't know what the right approach is for this, but I know I've mentioned it previously. Budget season's gonna be on us very quickly. I'd like to have the town administrator and Dawn Parnell maybe figure out how we can expedite the town portion of the budget to coincide with the school, so the budget committee can do them together, so we have one, an understanding, a comprehensive understanding of what the town costs are gonna be for a year. So I don't know, you know, what that's gonna entail, but maybe at some future meeting we could get Dawn in here and figure out, see if he can get it done or not.
One of the things you have to remember is that the charter specifies the procedure for presenting the budgets to the council. And by December fifteenth, it's my responsibility as a town administrator to present the council with the budget. You know, I, I understand the value of trying to do the two budgets together, but, you know, generally ours takes a little bit longer, although it takes a long time to do the school budget. But the, the charter says what the deadlines are for that.
If, if I might, I've, I've also had a brief discussion, actually yesterday, I believe it was, or two days ago, with the chairman of the school board, trying to set up some kind of a situation where the council and the school board can get together on maybe a workshop basis, something like that. And that's something that we can obviously discuss as a group. It's my hope that tomorrow evening, Counselor, Vice Chair Bergeron will be able to go to the school board meeting and just let them know what our thoughts are, as opposed to us having to actually send a council rep to the school board. So there is a potential that, you know, even though they won't be exactly the same time, by time you go to vote on the school budget, you should know what's going on with the municipal budget, I think. So, you know, but that is something that we can definitely talk as a group when we do meet. So.
The issue, we tried to expedite the process, which is fairly successfully, in bringing the budget committee and the council together to hear from the department head once.
Right, and I mean, I think it worked very well. The only, I think the issue we had as a budget committee was that the school budget is done, and you stop looking at the town budget, and, you know, if you're looking to save money, you're ending up cutting from the town, cutting from the town things you don't cut from the school, whereas I think it's more fair for everybody if you look at it in one fell swoop and treat everybody equally. You know, so that's all I'll say, that's fine.
Vice Chair Bergeron?
Eric, did you have more to add? I think everybody's noticed that the trees have been planted downtown, and I think our discussion with, with Mr. Winowski and Mr. LaBranche the other day about the quality of the trees and the quality of the plantings, I guess there's been some concerns, and we are addressing those. Though the trees look fairly healthy, there are some concerns about the way they were planted, and some of the specimens aren't, um, perfect by any means. So we will be addressing that, just wanted to let people know that. Also, a woman from the state of New Hampshire, Mary Reynolds, came in, and she's an expert on street scape trees and had some concerns as well about how they were planted. So we are, we are aware of that and will be looking at that. The other thing is in regard to Larry Pickering. He had mentioned the number of lights in the downtown. I was wondering, it came to me, why we couldn't turn every other one off, perhaps. I mean, this would require a little bit of rewiring, but if we could wire it in such a way that every other one goes off at a certain time, at night perhaps, so, you know, during the, the more used part of the evening, the downtown could be well lit, and then maybe later on in the night, we could, you know, dim half of them perhaps, maybe that would be a cost savings. Of course, that would require a little change to the infrastructure, you know, you'd have to change the way the circuits are arranged and add some timers and such, but, you know, if that would pay for itself in a certain timeframe, you know, that might be an option.
We'll, we'll look into that. We'll, I'll talk with the gentleman that we use for the, for electrical, to see if that's something that we can do. But if, if I may piggyback on something, I had a conversation this week with, with Rick Malaski, in fact, we had one yesterday downtown, again, in my office today. He has made, since last year, the lights went in, the new lighting went in, a request to PSNH to remove the old lights that are downtown. And he had called as late as Monday and said, "How come I still have lights?" And they are just not responding to it. I think everybody knows that we are having a little tete-a-tete, so to speak, with PSNH. I'm meeting with the, the senior vice president tomorrow relative to the project, and that's something I'll bring up, but Rick Malaski has been on them, you know, at least every month asking them why that, those lights are not down in the first instance. Secondly, I had a telephone call from a gentleman who lives in Nottingham, who saw the new lights when he was coming through town, and he works for GE Silvania, and says, "I think I can save you some money on some new lamps to go in there. I just haven't had an opportunity to give him a call and have him come in," but that's something we'll look at at this point. But, you know, we're, but there, there has been a request, and I'm really surprised to hear, that PSNH says, "We don't have a requesting because Mr. Malaski has put it in already on several occasions." Thank you.
Counselor Dickens, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Counselor Bottomen, I've got your light on. Is that from the last time?
Yep.
It worked. Sometimes. Counselor Quox, did you have something?
Yes. Getting back to the budget procedure, it was that Counselor Bottomen requested. The administrator said we have to have it ready by December fifteenth?
No, I, it is my responsibility to have the budget to the council by December fifteenth. I present the budget by December fifteenth, and then the council goes and begins their process.
It says here, "A budget procedure no later than January fifteenth" in the town charter. Budget procedure.
I usually, I usually have it to the council by December fifteenth.
But, but that's not a date that you have to have it by. That's section five-point-two with budget procedure. Could you, you could get it done earlier. I mean, that's not the date you have to have it done. You could get it done earlier to coincide with the recommendation by Mr. Bottomen for, to, to coordinate with the school budget.
Correct. As long as, as long as everybody understands that there are certain numbers from different vendors that tend to come in later in the year because, you know, we're in optional fiscal year. Same thing with the school, has that type of deal. They, they are July to June, just as new markets are July to June fiscal, the town side. There, you know, there is, our health costs and things begin later in, in January and early February when they start sending us notices. So as long as everybody understands that the numbers they're looking at are not gonna be hard-fast numbers because there's still some vacant areas there.
And when does the school budget finish with their budget?
They're, they're, they're ready for the March meeting. So generally, I think the budget committee completes the budget at the latest in February.
February fifteenth, yeah. All right. Okay. And, but I did, okay, that's the budget. The park bench is downtown. I hear they're, some are lagged down and some missing.
We've had, we've had one that grew feet and walked away.
Was it not lagged down?
Correct.
Why were they put out there and not being lagged down?
The benches would take four of us to pick up. It took four people, four guys from the town crew, to pick them up and put them into the back. If you haven't tried to pick up a bench, and I tried picking up the bench, and I've tried to pick up the, or at least move the trash containers, they weigh about three hundred pounds.
Well, I know the trash container's heavy, but those benches are just that composite with the rotten sides, no?
They're, they're very heavy items. And they were put down downtown, and somebody's walked off one.
We better keep downtown lit, so we can see who's there.
The other one's gonna be removed or lagged down ASAP?
We, we haven't, you know, part of the, the thing that we're looking at is that if we lag them down, we're going to have to deal with the fact that, you know, we have to make sure there's no obstruction, so when we're plowing snow in the wintertime, we're not, you know, damaging the sidewalk and stuff. So it's something we're looking at, but we really haven't gotten to the point of talking about that. You know, we're just trying to, hey, locate where this one went to, but, I mean, they're fairly heavy items.
Not heavy enough, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. You get four linebackers and they'll pick it up. Probably two of them will pick it up.
If the council, I'd just like to add that Erica did ask if she could leave at nine o'clock, so she's being excused.
Good night, Erica.
Good night, Erica. So please speak into your microphone so she can get the rest off the DVD.
And the, I, I understood, it was mentioned a few meetings ago, that there is an existing ordinance that we already had in place regarding tables and chairs on the sidewalks.
Yes.
And they're supposed to be within so many feet of the front of the building.
Correct.
Down there. Now, we have a business-
They can be located in the front of the building.
The front of the building, but not to block, because there is a business downtown that has a couple of tables and chairs that are right at the curb, which is a safety issue, and I don't know if it's in compliance with that ordinance.
The, the ordinance provides for an unobstructed travel lane through there, and yes, there is one business that has two, two tables that are over by the curb itself, but not so far that they would get injured by the, uh...
They're right at the curb. If, if a car jumps that granite curb, someone sitting in those chairs are gonna be hurt. And they're, they're, they're almost in the street.
I, I haven't, I haven't seen them in the street, as, as you say. I've, I've seen them down there, but I haven't seen them that close.
Yeah, the chairs are right on the curb, and I probably have this, the police chief look at it, or the safety committee look at it, because it is, and, and I don't know if it's in compliance with the ordinance that's regards.
Counselor Quox, might I suggest that we make that a topic for our workshop?
Sure.
On the seventeenth?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if, if you can be specific with where the location is and stuff, so that maybe we can, counselors can go and check it out beforehand.
It's the big, it's the big bean.
And, and, you know, then we can discuss it and make sure that all the, all the counselors know, and we can actually make sure that the ordinance gets enforced. How's that? Do we want to add it?
Yep.
Okay, so if you make sure they get on there, please?
Thank you.
Counselor Bottomen?
Could I just ask that we all get a copy of the ordinance? I don't, of course, see the ordinance.
Yes, that, that'll be in the package. Any other counselors for new business or new agenda items? Because that is part of this little blur, because if no one else does, I have a few. Okay. What I would like to do is if we could get on the workshop for the seventeenth, I know Counselor Quox had discussed the situation with alternates for planning board and budget committee. I think that'd be a great thing to discuss, and then we can move forward with it. My goal would be for the, for the workshops, that we discuss these issues, and then, such as this evening when we came in with the resolution for wastewater treatment superintendent, you know, we just flew through it. So let's bring that to our workshop. What I would like to do also for the July workshop, to give counselors time, and we can research this a little further if we need to, the legal opinion did say we can move the start date of the historic district commission to August first. I trust that all counselors got copies of that. If they did not, I want to make sure that they do. So I know we just got it, so if everyone wants to read it, we'll do that on our July workshop and discuss it and see what process we'd like to take. I would like to move this forward. Okay? I would also like to have some discussion on the bid process, if we may, at the next workshop on the seventeenth, as far as potentially having the bids open to the public.
You will-
You warned me about that.
Yeah, now, spill the water. You will be at the, at the next workshop. We hope to be providing your new purchasing policy revised, so we can add that in there.
Okay, all right. I, I just, you know, would feel comfortable, I know we have dates that these things are supposed to be given for certain reasons, and I'd feel better if they were actually opened with the full council present. I, I think, you know, we're the ones that ultimately okay the spending, so we might as well be the ones that open the bids. And if anyone disagrees with that, please say so. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
Aren't most bid openings during the day, though, so that the people who submit bids are there?
With the council, we can.
I'm just saying. Traditionally, because I've been a person who has actually submitted bids, and you want to usually be there.
One of the things, one of the things that we've done is, in discussing the, the purchasing policy, sort of broken it up and said that if the budget, if the, if the purpose of the bid relates to an item that's already been approved in the budget, that the department head and the town administrator, we hold the bid opening during the daytime. If it's, if it relates to an expenditure that comes from the, either the capital reserve or the expendable trust funds, that that would come before the council, because that's, that's the council's responsibility to release those funds and have that discussion and stuff. So we could have the opening and then allow the department head to take that back and then come back two weeks later and provide a, a review of to whom should we see the bid.
Okay.
And we, and again, we can discuss that, because that's why we have a purchasing policy as one of the items for the next meeting.
Okay, and I did have a brief conversation with the finance director the other day. Will he be able to supply the council with encumbered funds from this, before the end of the fiscal year?
We, we talked with the department heads about that, at our meeting today, and we're gonna be requesting people to fill out purchasing orders, so that way we can have that in the, in the office to, so he, he can begin to build that. And we'll have some probably.
Okay.
I don't know if we'll have them all, but we'll have the balance of them, at least by the business meeting in July.
All right, then we'll just pencil that in, try to look for the business meeting if we could. And, and that's all I've got. Anyone else? Any suggestions or ideas for the workshop? Okay, then, one other thing I have before we go into our, oh, actually, we've got a couple, a couple of other things. Real quickly, I have requested, along with the town administrator, a meeting with Upton and Hatfield to discuss rules and procedures for town counselors or counselors. It'll be considered a non-meeting, and I've scheduled this for the twenty-fourth of this month, which is a Wednesday, six-thirty. And it would be nice if everyone could be here, especially the new counselors. It'll, I, I want to do it because that way there, we're not rushed to the fact that we've still got an agenda that we've got to deal with, and we can ask questions. And perhaps in regard to, it's one of the reasons why I really- regard to, it's one of the reasons why I really pushed the historic ordinance to the July, because that'll give us a chance to maybe chat with them on, on how ordinances, you know, can get tweaked or whatever. So the 24th will be Upton and Hatfield, 6:30. Here, correct? Chambers? Okay.
I will not be here, I'll be out of town that day.
I'm also going to be on vacation that week.
Okay.
Might I do it the week before?
So that's the 17th.
I mean, the week between the, the business workshop.
There is no week between.
Well, the next, the week before is the workshop.
Yeah, the 20, 24th, and then we'll go right to the business meeting on the 1st.
Well, I know, I'm saying-
We're here.
I mean, if we could do it the 10th, I don't have a problem, but-
I don't think they'd be ready.
I don't, I don't know if they'd be ready or not.
I won't be here.
On the 10th?
They come in at the workshop and just do a non-meeting before the workshop?
I guess, could we, could we have a, it might be advisable that people could provide us when you anticipate you might be going on vacation and stuff like that, so we can, if there is a meeting like that, we could at least have an idea and say, "Well, I know we're gonna have two people out here and one person out here," and-
Does anyone have a problem with July 8th, if we can push it off there?
No.
No.
Can we check with them, because that'll still get us before the workshop on the 15th? Okay, so tentatively July 8th works for everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next agenda items, number eight, town council appointments of reps to committees and boards. I trust that all councilors do know where they're gonna be at the present time, but for the, just for the record, I will read it off. For the planning board, it's Councilor Bottomman. For the Budget Committee, it's Councilor Dickens. CIP is Councilor Carr. Municipal Audit is Councilor Quox. Conservation Commission is Vice Chair Bergeron. Advisory Heritage is Councilor Minutelli, and I will be doing the Black Bear Tiff. I'm sorry, Councilor Carr, did you have a question previously?
Oh, no, that was when I said I wasn't gonna be in town.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So unless there's no other questions on this, we'll move on to number nine.
He's still on school board as well, which isn't listed here?
Nope.
Okay.
No, that's gonna be part of the discussion.
She said you were gonna be there tomorrow.
He, he is gonna be there.
Oh, okay.
I trust he will be there. So no questions on that?
I like that.
Move on to number nine, which is the town administrator's report. That's what I've got.
Yeah, no, I know I have it, but I don't think there was anything that I was-
I know you did give us the FYI.
I gave you an FYI.
Yep. Well, what part of it would you like?
That's not-
I don't, I think this is probably what you'd want, more so than the other part.
I just, I've received a bid from Peter Knight of the Stanhope Group relative to providing me a value for the DPW garage in 321 Ash Swamp Road, which is probably at a butt's landfill, and they're sending a proposal to me relative to that. We'll be meeting with, we had met up at the water tank to talk about the access, and there was a request to obtain from Mr. Malaski how much it would cost to create the new access so that it can be used by propane vehicles in addition to the, the town's vehicles to perform any work up there, and he noted, he noted it would be about, about $10,000. The town crew would do the work, most of the cost would be in the material and hire a dozer for a couple of days to grub out the road and move material around. I mentioned that if you haven't seen the, the work that's been completed at the memorial down by the Antup Association, that's been completed, I think they just have a small fence to put up.
Chain, is it?
Chain, chain link that has to be completed. And one of the things in talking with the, the business association, we wanted to get some, some press on the fact that we have had five new businesses that have opened up in New Market since last year, in the last, in the fall, actually. And actually tomorrow, there'll be the first ribbon cutting, which will be at 10 o'clock in front of Get a Scoop, the new ice cream shop that opened up, and then every two, every two weeks, we're gonna have a different one. What we'd like to do is just let people know that things are happening in New Market, and in fact, met with an individual who is looking to put in a business in the new, what used to be the old Chinese restaurant downtown next to the tavern, that's gonna be going in there. A gentleman is, has signed a lease, and will be opening in, he's looking in probably August to open, there's gonna be a-
What type of business?
Excuse me?
What type of business?
He and his wife are gonna be doing soups, different types of soups.
Where is that gonna be?
The old Chinese restaurant.
Next to the Lampert Tavern.
Yeah.
Nice.
So he was gonna be in Durham's, but he went over there and got discouraged. So he came to New Market, and there was an opening, and he is gonna move into it, so things are happening in New Market.
So it burns, since the construction was done.
Well, if anybody can attend the ribbon cutting, that'd be great. It's gonna be right in front of Get the Scoop. We have the reporter here, he'll be with the trusted camera.
I'm gonna be there, yep.
So, great.
10 o'clock, correct?
10 o'clock.
10 in the morning.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, that's it that I have.
Did you want to touch on that, or no?
Just as I mentioned earlier, I've had, received a phone call this week from the vice president from PSNH to talk about the issues that we have relative to the cost of the downtown PSNH work, and we're meeting with him tomorrow to hopefully come to some kind of, of decisions that I can bring back to the council so we can discuss and hopefully resolve this. I did ask them, because one of the problems that we are having at the current time is the work on PSNH's side of the project has stopped because of this problem that we have. The town has approximately $700,000 in the, in the project budget to move, to continue to move this on, and I've asked them to, to move that, if they would, get back out there and, you know, continue to bury and connect lines, so we'll be discussing that also tomorrow, and I'm gonna bring up the issue of the lights also.
Any questions for the town administrator? Yes, Councilor Quox?
Any discussion on the June 8th detour that's going to begin Monday, I believe, is right?
On the what?
Is it the detour starting June 8th on Monday? Any information on that?
Correct, that's, other than it, the signs are up and letting people know it'll be one-way traffic going north, and the old detour will be back in place for approximately about two weeks, two and a half weeks.
At Packers Falls with the stop sign? Oh, gosh.
I think that, that Chief Seer will be out there with his, his guys to do it. I think to put the sign up for a short period of time is gonna, yeah, in two weeks.
It's gonna be one of those things, so- Just be getting used to it.
The stop sign will still be there, that's currently at Elm Street in Packers Falls. The flow will still be Packers Falls, but I'm sure that they've got that covered, so.
And also let people know that there's the road race in town on-
Yep, there's a road race on Sunday, 5K for anyone that wants to run it.
And it's actually gonna end down on, down at the road.
Yep.
And it's got a lot of people running it, too, so just let people know.
You running it?
Mr. Winowski, I hate to be a nag, but any updates on the cell phone tower?
Well, you can be a nag, and other than the fact that all the paperwork that the town in New Market requires has been submitted, it's just a matter of them pulling a parent to get up there and do the work. I can't, I can't do anything, anything better than that, any more than I can do anything with PSNH.
That's all I ask.
Yeah, but they're, they, that's all I have to do at this point, and we're just waiting. We've got the bond in place and all the other stuff. And, and in addition to that, I had another cell phone company come in and met with myself and Diane today, because they're looking to locate another tower in town.
Ooh, good.
So what you're saying is that the town planner has, or the planning board has approved everything, all the paperwork is been done?
Yep, submitted.
Then, might I suggest that maybe the town planner just give these people a call and say, "Hey, we're waiting for you to come?"
What I do is, I, I communicate-
Obviously, they won't call them on the cell phone, but they'll call them-
I was just gonna say, she can't get a signal.
But if we could just possibly have her just, you know-
Oh, we, council sent an email the other day, and, you know, just to verify that everything is all set, Diane sent it back, and he sent a, a copy to me to Verizon folk and said, "It's in your court." We don't hear anything, I generally touch base with them and see about getting it going, because I know, I hear from, there are several people who send me emails and ask me for updates, and I will shoot them an update, so. I think the best thing that could happen is if Verizon users started calling Verizon and said, "When is the tower going to have, you know, the antennas?" I know one individual, and I'm not putting this out there, because I think you should do it, but one individual was promised, you know, good service in New Market, and was getting such poor service, he called them up and said, "This is what I'm getting," and they cut his bill in half. So maybe that's what Verizon users want to start doing with their cell carriers. Maybe we'll get the tower up in a few days, or the antennas, I should say. That's what we're hoping for.
I'm all set, thanks.
Anything else for the town administrator? Okay, then I guess at this point, we're looking for a motion, Councilor Minutelli.
To, for non-public?
That's where I'm at.
Motion to enter non-public pursuant to RSA 91A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, subsection A, relative to discussion of compensation of employees.
Second.
Discussion, call the vote, please.
Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Councilor Minutelli?
Aye.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Dickens?
Aye.
Councilor Bergeron?
Aye.
Chairman LaBranche?
Aye.